Oh, I'm not in San Francisco. I think that's because I have my camera blocked. There we go.
Okay, we're going to be envious with missing all the ice and the snow, John. How'd you make that?
It's it's all through the magic of Zoom. Actually, I wasn't even, I haven't used Zoom for quite a while, so that might have been the last background I used, and it's been a couple of months, so.
Well, it must have been a few weeks since I last used it because it had to go through an update cycle for me before it would push me on through.
Sure.
Well, so Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
We got Shannon upside down. Oh, there she is. Okay.
So I wonder what that does. Now I know.
I feel like I'm in a studio. Oh, and Nick, not to throw you off, but after you call the meeting to order, I will, I'm going to make a point of order because about the process when you get the approval of meeting minutes.
Sure, okay. Yeah, our agenda is intentionally light and with plenty of time for open discussion, so things like points of order will be easily discussed. Let's see, I don't see Darren yet, although I've got my screen configured in a strange way.
He's at the bottom of mine where I have it as.
Oh, okay, yeah, just, let's see, I see. Let's see, I'm gonna commissioners here, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Are we, I think we're missing one. Who are we missing?
Liz.
Catherine, Evelyn, John, Ed, Greg. Oh, Ed, where, I thought I saw Ed before.
Yeah, I'm here.
There you are, okay, okay.
Nick, we're missing Liz right now.
Oh, okay, thank you for the help, okay. We'll give her one more minute and then we'll, we'll start, and she can always join, hopefully that she hasn't lost power or something.
I'll text her as well.
Well, the sun has just set back here, and it's only a month since the shortest day, and it's really noticeable now in the evenings, the evenings are extending, which is really nice.
Yeah, really is noticeable.
Liz said she's on her way.
Perfect, perfect. And we will have a full complement. And Linda, thank you for your flexibility of changing to a remote meeting. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
We're missing the nice dinner, though. We'll look forward to that the next time.
Uh, I made Taco Tuesday, but, you know, everybody's I can't pass it through the computer.
My granddaughter thinks we can.
I was gonna say, speaking of Taco Tuesday, we just had enchiladas for dinner, so that fits right in line.
Absolutely. Stay with the theme.
Well, and I see Liz joining us, I think. Yep, there she is. We are at a full complement, so Happy New Year to to everyone. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. As I mentioned in prior to calling the meeting to order, our agenda is intentionally light, and that provides us some time to do some administrative kinds of tasks, which won't take us very long, I don't believe. But spend more time on introductions and then plenty of kind of open time for discussions, priorities of 2024, what's on the commission's mind, and a look ahead from community development perspective as what we've got coming up in 2024 as well. And so in terms of a roll call, why don't we use the introduction to do a roll call? Would that work for you, Linda? And you have it on your screen as well. And usually, if this were a public hearing, I don't see any member of the public participating. And so if if there aren't any objections amongst the commissioner of community development, I'll revert to using given names informally rather than titles and surnames. Is that okay with everyone?
Yes, that's fine.
Great, okay. So what I would suggest we do is we have a couple of people to introduce. We have a new commissioner and Darren has a new community development person to introduce as well. And so if I could ask, as we go through the the screen, and I'll basically call on you in the order that you're appearing on my screen. If you could introduce yourself with a couple of sentences, what you do when you're not on the planning commission, and what part of the county you live in, which will help us demonstrate the geographic diversity that we have here on the commission. Greg, you're in my upper left corner. Could I ask you to begin?
Sure, thanks, Nick. Greg Hayman, I am commissioner representing North Albany in Benton County. I am retired, most recently the president of Lynn Benton Community College. And my other job is serving as a commissioner on the Oregon Higher Education Commission. Think that enough?
Thanks, Greg. Shannon, you're the next individual on my screen.
Shannon Bush, I'm the interim deputy director in community development. I've been in that position since May of last year, so approaching a year now here pretty soon. But I've been with the county for about a year and a half. And I live in the Corvallis area, for anyone who's interested.
John.
Well, good evening, everybody. John Wilson, retired. And newly appointed to the planning commission board last year, so I'm honored with that privilege to serve, serving the north Benton County area in Fromadare Village. And yeah, and I'm not in San Francisco, but it looks like I am, but.
Very good. Evelyn.
Well, I'm in Alpine, Monroe Alpine area, and when I'm not doing planning commission work, there's lots of volunteers and lots of volunteer effort out in this area. I'm very interested in wildfire and water issues. But I also have a little farm, and sheep that are in the barn right now. And chickens, which are getting very hard to get water to right now.
Oh, I bet. Ed.
I am, I'm Ed Fulford, recently retired HP executive. Currently doing cybersecurity consulting work. In a reference for John, actually, I am in in San Francisco right now, so it's nice and warm down here, missing out on all the ice. I'm on the Heartland, Heartland Board. And I like to go on hikes, mountain hikes, logging roads in the Stryker Forest with my, with my dogs.
Excellent. Catherine.
She's on mute.
Hi, um, Happy New Year, everybody. Catherine Bisco, I am a commissioner representing the Palomath area of Benton County. I'm a former city councillor, so come with a little bit of local government experience. And I historically have been a small business owner, but for the last two and a half years, been working for Oregon's Department of Transportation.
Thank you. Andrew.
Hey, everyone. Andrew Struthers. I live in the northeast part of Corvallis. For my day job, I work at Oregon State as an IT consultant. And then I'm a previous city councillor for the city of Corvallis.
Excellent. And Sarah, you're next on my, on my screen. And Sarah, I should mention, is a new commissioner, so please give us the, kind of the embellished version of your backgrounds, we can better understand from, from where you, you come onto the commission, your interests in joining the commission, and your geography, as well as your day job.
So hi, everybody. A Happy New Year. I'm out here in LC, and we've been having a heck of a time. So if I disappear, it just means that the power went out again. Excuse me, um, yeah. Speaking about getting water to the chickens, so so I am here on the planning commission because my current activity is that I'm the project coordinator of an emerging nonprofit in LC called the LC Community Action Collaborative. And we're under the fiscal sponsorship of the LC Community Effort that you may have encountered in previous countywide work, if you've been doing that for a few years. So ACAC is intended to be a catalyst for community-based actions in LC, and also as a point of contact for LC with outside agencies and individuals and institutions. We are an unincorporated town, but we have lots of local-based services. So we're quite organized. For heaven's sakes, we have a newspaper, you know, that kind of thing. But it's hard for, it became clear last year when we had a series of community meetings that even the state representatives wanted to get in touch with us, they didn't know who to get in touch with. So we've created this entity to serve as a point of contact, and that led to somehow, I guess Darren reached out and said, I need somebody to apply to be on the commission, you know, from LC, so here I am. Thank you for having me. It's, it's an honor, and I appreciate it.
And welcome to the commission.
Thank you.
Liz.
Hi, everybody. Liz, planning commission just was reappointed. I was holding my breath for that one. I think Nick and I were both being reappointed. I don't know if anybody else was, but thank goodness I'm here. Oh, Ed, you are. I am on the budget committee. My day job is I'm a mortgage broker. I've been in the real estate industry as a Realtor or a lender 30 years. That's me.
Excellent. Linda.
Hello, I'm Linda Ray. I am the executive administrative specialist for community development, and I've been with the county about four years.
Thank you. Alyssa.
Sorry, everyone, I don't have my camera on, but I am receptionist at community development. You will likely see me as you walk by, and I'll be taking minutes.
Thank you for doing so. And Darren, after you introduce yourself, could you please give a couple of sentences and welcome to Petra?
Yeah, thank you, Nick. Appreciate that. Happy New Year, everyone. Darren Nichols, community development director and kind of key staff to the planning commission. I just want to clarify one thing for the record, Mr. Chair. If Sarah Cash is on the planning commission, it's not my fault, but I am thrilled to.
Yeah, sorry about that, Darren.
I am thrilled to have another representative from the LC community. I think most of you had a chance to meet Eddie Provost during his brief stint. He, Eddie brought, you know, a colorful voice to the LC community and was a welcome participant. And when, when Eddie needed to step down, we were feeling that loss of kind of that part of the county, and we're thrilled to have Sarah step up into the role and represent Western Benton County. So I'm a native Oregonian. I've been with Benton County as the community development director for a little over two years now. It's a privilege to work with all of you, and I'm just especially excited that we have a full complement of planning commissioners as we go into 2024 and some of the really exciting work ahead. And not only do we have a full complement of planning commissioners, but we now have a nearly full complement of staff, so next, I want to introduce Petra Sheets, who is a native Benton County resident and is coming home to us at a time when we will really value her expertise. So rather than having me introduce Petra, Petra, give you a chance to introduce yourself to everybody and welcome to the team.
Thank you so much. I've heard nothing but amazing things about this commission, so I can't wait to work with you. Again, my name is Petra Sheets, and I was raised in Corvallis, Corvallis High School, but I've been up and down the Willamette Valley for the last 20 years, working in various roles, both as a planning director, public works director, and city manager. Coburg Eugene, currently in Silverton. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have, but I have worked my entire career in the public sector, primarily with cities, but also with counties. And yeah, I am absolutely thrilled to be able to represent the commission as your planning official. So good to be here.
Well, thank you, and I realize I've already mispronounced your name, so please, please correct me if I do that again. Is Petra?
Yeah, it's the more European pronunciation for those people.
Okay, well, I'll try to, to, to keep that in mind, but correct me if I make a mistake. Don't let that go, go aside. And I think that's everybody, at least that's everybody on my screen. Am I missing anyone? Good. And John, you mentioned that you're going to have a point of order, so would you like to introduce that here?
Sure. I was just going to point out that I believe I will be abstaining in the approval of the minutes for July 18th, as I was not on the planning commission board for that meeting. That's the only point of order I was going to raise.
Okay, very good. We'll keep that in mind. And we will take the, the meeting minutes individually, so you can raise that, that point on that particular meeting. Let's see, the next item on our agenda are, let's see, election of 2024 officers. Our bylaws require annual election of, of officers. Currently, Greg is our vice chair, and I serve as the chair. And so I will now open the floor to nominations for chair. Greg.
I would, I would like to nominate Nick Fowler as the chair of the planning commission.
I'd like to second that.
Okay, and as this is an election, rather than moving directly to a vote, I would entertain any other nominations for chair. I don't see any, any, so any discussion before calling for the vote?
I would just.
Seeing.
I would like to, I would just like to say, I think that that's brilliant, Greg. Thank you for nominating him. Oops, sorry, I dropped my phone. I have never been on a group with such an organized chair in my life, and I think you do a phenomenal job, Nick. And I am really happy that we're nominating you again, and that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, I'm blushing. So let me move on to the call on a vote, and all those in favor, please raise a hand or signify by aye or something to indicate. Any opposed? Seeing none. Okay, motion passes. Thank you for your vote of confidence. Now moving on to the office of vice chair, entertain nominations for vice chair. Andrew.
I would nominate for Greg as vice chair.
I'd like to second that nomination. Thank you. I think, I guess we're going by first names. Thank you, Andrew. I support that as well.
Great. And as again, this is an election, I'll entertain any other nominations for vice chair. Seeing none, we'll move on to any deliberations on the nomination of Greg Hayman for position of vice chair. And then call for the vote. Again, signify with a thumbs up or an aye or, or something.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Very well, and thanks, Greg. Appreciate your, your service to the commission. Linda sent out the package of materials, which included the minutes. And we'll go in chronological order of the, of the minutes. It's hard to imagine that reviewing minutes from July 18th. Andrew, do you have a question?
I was going to write a motion.
Very well. Let's look at July 18th first.
I moved to approve the minutes from July 18th, 2023.
And do we have a second?
I second.
Thanks, Liz. Any amendments, edits, or modifications to the minutes of July 18th prior to calling for the vote to approve?
No changes. No changes, just a comment. I want to admit that, given how long ago it is, it took me a while to reacquaint myself with that meeting, but I appreciate the great minutes. It helped me, so thank you. Linda, if you're the person that does this, thank you very much.
Then I'll move to, to the vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes from July 18th, 2023, signify by aye or a thumbs up? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And John, was this where you wanted to abstain?
Yes, I abstained. Wasn't a member yet.
That makes it, makes it easy then. Moving to the minutes of August 29, 2023. Entertain a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Would second that.
Greg, thank you. Any amendments, edits, modifications to the minutes of August 29? Seeing none, move to the vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes of August 29, 2023, signify by aye or a thumbs up?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
So Chair Fowler, not in a, not in opposition, but I didn't, I couldn't get my mute off quick enough. Was that actually August 26th? Was that our Tuesday quarterly? Is that date correct, is my question?
Good question. Now that's a Thursday. Does anyone have their calendar from the summer to ensure that we have the, and perhaps, Linda, you, you recall whether it was a Thursday?
You know, and that may be correct, so I apologize.
Oh, so Catherine, it's, you're withdrawing their comment?
Yeah, I think it's all right. I, I was thinking our September 26th meeting, not August.
Ah, very good. Okay, and I think we've already taken the, the vote, but we captured little comment there. And moving on to September 19 minutes, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Do in a second.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, we've got John and Andrew as, as seconds. Any modifications, edits, or amendments to the minutes of September 19? Seeing none, move to the vote. All those in favor signify by aye or thumbs up?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. And Linda, does that catch us up to date, or was there a meeting later in the fall that we still have to review minutes?
The only other meeting we have is the one that was with the BOC, and so you'll have those minutes at the next quarterly with the Board of Commissioners' office.
Very well, thank you. Moving on to our open-ended conversation, wanted to look ahead to 2024. And, and we'll start with, with Darren here, because I know he has some comments to make, but as Darren is, is talking, or perhaps you have been thinking already in the meeting, the intention of this topic was to capture your thoughts as commissioners, what your priorities are, any concerns you have moving into 2024. Any improvements to procedure? Basically, anything that you would like to bring up for discussion with the group is fair game. Giving you a few moments to think about that. I'll ask Darren to cover the topic, perhaps, of periodic review. Does that make sense, Darren?
Yes, that makes sense. I've actually got two, two things that I want to cover today, and they're, they're related. I want to talk about an update to our code. And I also want to talk about our voluntary periodic review work plan. And so just kind of catch us up on where we've been and provide a little entree into the conversation. And then I just want to underscore what Nick just said, which is please do let us know how we're doing, ways that we can do better. And I, I say that in part because I think it just helps us to be better staff support to you all. It'll help the commission do its work as, as best it can if we just stay open to opportunities for improvement. But also, I think it's good to say this out loud, it's been a long time since Benton County has updated its comprehensive plan or taken on substantial policy work in the way that we're going to embark in 2024, so you, your insights, your preferences, your leadership really will be key to our success in those efforts. And I just want to encourage us to start out by saying, how would you like this to go? And really thankful for all of your leadership, including Nick and Greg continuing to serve as the chair and vice chair. All right, so just want to catch you up to speed on kind of where we are with the Benton County Development Code. I think most of you know that there was a budget allocation for a code update. And we've been in discussion with a couple of contractors about how best to approach a complete overhaul of the Benton County Development Code. And there are a couple of main reasons for the code update. One is that we're overdue for a lot of legislative consistency updates, so as you well know, much of our development code reflects Oregon state law. And over the past several legislative sessions, it seems like the legislature has been pretty aggressive in some of the policy changes that they've made, which affects Benton County. We have been a little bit less aggressive in terms of updating our code to reflect those changes. So we've got a few overdue updates. Kind of housekeeping items that need to be caught, caught up to date. Perhaps more to the point, for planning commissioners and for other members of the community, our development code has some inconsistencies in it. There are things that just don't, they just don't add up across the chapters. And, you know, that's kind of normal, I think, for a local government's development code. There's always things that either get missed or, you know, things that are kind of oversights. But I know that our staff has flagged a bunch of those, and I'm hoping that planning commissioners will also want to roll up your sleeves and help us get our code cleaned up as best we can. And so this is what I think that effort's going to look like at this point in time. I'd say it's a three-phase kind of effort. The first phase is going to be catching up with the legislative changes and, and just getting, getting things kind of caught up with, with real-time legislative policy updates. The second phase will be more prospective as the comprehensive planning work kind of unfolds. There'll be an opportunity for us to. There'll be an opportunity for us to update our code provisions to reflect changes in policy. So we don't know what those are going to look like yet. But I know many of you participated in conversations around wildfire resilience, for instance, or water planning, or transportation, or housing. And so depending on kind of what might change in our comprehensive plan policies through periodic review, we will also need to update our development code to reflect those policy changes. So we're thinking about that as Phase Two. And then in a Phase Three, or a Phase two point one, however we choose to organize it, we'll want to do some reformatting so that our development code in Benton County is as legible and as easy to understand as possible for members of the public, for staff, for planning commissioners and and board members. So it's it's an easier to read document. It's it's more intuitive. It reflects not only our values, but it's also easy to interpret, understand, or at least as easy as a land use code can be. So that's kind of the first effort. I'm going to pause there for a minute and give Shannon Bush a chance to talk a little bit about what's already underway. Shannon, do you mind doing that?
So over the last, I guess it's been in earnest in the past couple of weeks, but really in the past several months, we've been in the process of kind of deciphering what we might need to improve the accessibility of our code online. So as you all might know, up until this point, Benton County has posted, excuse me, posted a series of PDF, like individual chapters on the website. So that has been the way that we have provided access to the public and to ourselves, really, to the county code. So and let me just say, when I say county code, I mean the full code, including development code. So it's not a super accessible way to go about providing that information to the public because it's not searchable. The variety of just kind of individual chapters really requires somebody to know exactly what they're looking for first before they're able to find it very easily. So the past couple of months, we've had kind of a key group of stakeholders in the county identifying a better service for providing those individual individual chapters, but the kind of entire code on the website. And we are now in the process of kind of the final signature for a software called MuniCode. It is what the city of Corvallis uses. A ton of other jurisdictions use it as well, so it's very, very common, well-known, very well-established software. So what that will do for us is if somebody, let's say, they always use the example of fences. So if you want to know if Benton County regulates fences, for example, if you think about how you would do that now, it's kind of tricky. Honestly, I wouldn't even know how to do that. I would probably have to download each every single kind of PDF, merge them together, and then search for the word fence. It's not very efficient. What MuniCode will allow us to do is to go to that website, type in the word fence, and it will highlight for you and kind of show you. It's it's essentially a Google search, you could think of it as, within the code chapters, and it will highlight for you anytime the word fence comes up, as well as a series of documents that I think over time the county will have to upload into MuniCode through a sort of subset of features called MuniDocs. So if the word fence comes up at a Board of Commissioners meeting last week, we you would get that hit as well. So you would say, oh, they were just talking about fences at a board meeting last week. What was that discussion about? So that we're super excited. It's it's been signed by county sort of partners, and now it's just in Civic Plus's sort of queue to be signed by Civic Plus is the the sort of umbrella company that publishes that software. So it's in their queue for signature right now. And then, once the contract is fully executed, they estimate about a three-month turnaround for that software to go live. So my sort of best guess is about early Q two is when we think we'll be having some preliminary access to MuniCode. So it's super exciting. I think it's going to really improve the public's sort of ability to look on the county's website and and find what they're looking for and make sense of it. Let me know if you have any questions. Happy to help, you know, send you some links or whatever you might want to do to kind of start to get acquainted with that.
Evelyn.
Would you spell the the name of the software? MuniCode? M I N I?
Yep, Muni, so M U N I C O D E. And you know what I'm actually going to do is I'm going to put a link in our chat and send that to everybody so you can kind of check it out. So the best way to do it, I'm going to I'm going to link you to where you arrive at a at a map of the US and click Oregon, and you can kind of check what Oregon jurisdictions have it just as an example. The one thing I do want to mention, though, is MuniCode has a variety of sort of, it's kind of à la carte. So if you were to check and look at the city of Corvallis, which I'm sure everybody here has probably seen that at some point in time, the city of Corvallis is sort of platform is going to look different than John Day's, which is going to look different than Roseburg's, which is going to look different than, you know, name the state and jurisdiction within there. That's because you have the ability to to pick and choose and pay for what individual features you want. So just keep that in mind. You know, it's it's not necessarily going to look exactly like any of those examples. So TBD on exactly how ours will look, but we do, we have paid for the sort of branding, so it will look like Benton County and be very identifiable. And I'll put that link in here just now.
All right. Thank you, Shannon. While you're putting that up, just a couple of things. First of all, you can imagine that it actually takes quite a bit of time and effort to just sift through the contractors who provide this kind of service. And so hats off to Shannon and a number of our team members who really vetted several different platforms. And I feel really good about where we are with Civic Plus and the MuniCode service, in part because I think close to five thousand local governments use this platform nationwide, so it's it's proven, but also because we were able to get to consensus, not just with community development, but with our finance department, with the county council's office, with the administrator's office, to adopt a single platform that will work for all of Benton County's code, not just the development code. So I know you know this, but chapters forty-nine to one hundred are what we call the development code. Chapters one through forty-nine are what we have historically referred to as the county code. Well, there are some sections of the county code that are directly impact the development code. So for instance, chapter two deals with how we contract, including how we contract for land use and planning consultants and others and Internet Technology Consultants. Chapter twenty-three deals with solid waste and solid waste agreements. You know, those are very much connected with other parts of the development code. And so now, as Shannon described a minute ago, we actually have all of Benton County's regulations in one platform that anybody will be able to search across, not just the code, but the agendas and minutes that led to the adoption of those code updates or that captured the Board of Commissioners or the Planning Commission's discussions. So I think from a transparency standpoint, this is a huge step forward for us, and I'm I just appreciate Shannon and others taking the time to make sure that we get this right.
See, John, you've got your hand up.
Yeah, and it's hopefully not too off topic, but because the code itself is very new, and as I go through the code book that I was graciously given, I noticed there's a date at the bottom of each chapter, or at least the page of each chapter. Is that the date of adoption of that particular code? Because there the dates are, I mean, essentially, the the front of the book tells us that the code is in effect starting in nineteen eighty-nine, I think. But there are sections in chapters where the dates correspond to the adoption of that particular chapter. Okay.
Yeah, thank you, John. That's a great question. When you see those dates at the bottom of the page, those are the the iterations on which the Board of Commissioners adopted changes to that section of the code. Yeah. And of course, for each one of those iterations, the Planning Commission would have also taken a preliminary look at it with staff and then put forward recommendations. So you all definitely have a role to play in those iterations as well. Any other questions about the code? Concerns? Suggestions? I can't see all of you at once, so I apologize. If you have your hand up, shout out. So.
I I I was just going to give a kudos to getting MuniCode. Working with the city of Corvallis, it was mentioned that they use it, and I will tell you, being able to search through there, even just for a single word is very useful. So kudos for getting with MuniCode.
Yeah, thank you for that. I appreciate it. It's it's a it's a good step for us at Benton County. It's a pretty big step forward in terms of technology and transparency. Okay, other questions, thoughts, comments? There's no bad questions at this point. There's definitely bad questions. Evelyn.
Not a bad question. I'm just wondering, I want to clarify in my own mind what Shannon said. This is expected to be implemented in about three months from now. Are we going to get busy on code changes before then?
Shannon, do you want to you want to answer that? You want me to take a stab at it?
I can give you the kind of, I think it's going to be a tag team kind of response. So Evelyn, what we have already done was back in December, we submitted to Civic Plus all of our existing county code chapters, anything that has been adopted by ordinance, basically through December, they have those PDFs now. And what they are going to be doing as soon as that contract is signed is beginning that process kind of from like the behind-the-scenes perspective of just uploading all that content. So they they do it like via the OCR sort of stuff. So it's basically any even things that are yeah, like text images can be translated into actual text going forward. So that's what takes the three months. But I'll let Darren answer the rest of the question, kind of in terms of the timing of the the larger project.
Yeah, thank you, Shannon. So Evelyn, to answer your question directly, we are just beginning. The consulting team at Civic Plus will begin doing some of that work immediately. And and so some of the preliminary work, just getting the old paper versions of our code into an electronic format, that will be happening immediately and for the next, I would say, three to six months. At the same time, we're also visiting with, it's a very small kind of handful of contractors who have experience to do this kind of work in Oregon. But we're talking to a small handful of land use and planning consultants who might be able to help us with Phase Phase Two and Phase Three. And so we've been we've been visiting with those firms and kind of seeing who has capacity, who's kind of interested and willing, and also who has the expertise to help us do this and do it well. So we we just heard from one of the consultants today saying they didn't think they had the capacity at this point in time. So that's fine. There are a few others, and we'll be talking to them. But our goal is to have a team ready to work with you and with us and with the community ASAP. And somebody that can kind of work with us through these three phases and also to work with us through the comprehensive plan update so that they are familiar with our code, they're familiar with the changes that have been made, and they're also familiar with kind of where the planning commission, where the board wants to head with the policy direction. So it's probably kind of preliminary to say this at at this point, but one of our goals is to build some relationships and some capacities within the contracting community with the, you know, professional land use consultants. So that, as we continue to do work going forward, we know who's who's good to work with. We know who, you know, we want to work with going forward. And to develop some familiarity with with those folks, so that Benton County is a known quantity, a good partner. And we can ask, you know, outside folks to step in and kind of boost our capacity as we need help going forward. So I I hope that helps answer the question. But the short answer is, we want to start immediately, and then and then going forward, we'll, you know, we'll do whatever needs to be done then as well. Okay. Okay. I think we've touched on most of that. When we get finished, Nick, I would I would like to open the floor for discussion about how the planning commissioner, planning commissioners, maybe even some subcommittees would like to engage with us on this work, because I I think that's where we're going to get the most value out of the leadership from this group, is if you all have a chance to roll up your sleeves alongside of us. But I I don't want to ask for that quite yet, because I think you probably want to hear some of the other things that are unfolding. We want to hear from planning commissioners about what's on your minds. But before the this evening is over, I would like to open the door for for planning commissioners to, you know, kind of raise your hand and say, I would really like to work on X or X and Y. But I don't feel like I should ask you that question quite yet, because it's not fair, because you you don't know what what those opportunities might look like.
That that sounds good. And and as long as you're on a role, would you like to proceed with some of the initiatives that are coming out of the state and the pairing locally about housing and inventory and and so forth?
Yeah, for sure. Let's, if it's okay, I think, let's talk about the voluntary periodic review, the comprehensive plan update framework as a whole. And then I'll start to put some of the pieces underneath that framework. And I should start by saying, none of this is set in stone. In fact, it's very, right now, it's very malleable. What we have is basically the green light to get started. But but what to work on and the order in which we work on these things, the partners that we work with, that's still very much kind of in play. And I encourage, welcome, beg, plead, cajole, planning commissioners to to weigh in and and can help shape this comprehensive plan update effort. So I'm going to share what I can tonight in kind of a status update format, but with the expectation that you all will push back, lean in, nudge, you know, help us really shape this. So when we met back in September, on the twenty-sixth of September, we met with the Board of Commissioners in our quarterly kind of work session format. And we talked with, you remember the planning director, both current and former from Wasco County. We also talked to a couple of staff members from the Department of Land Conservation and Development about ways that at least one other county and actually a few other counties have approached updating their comprehensive plans. And we talked about a thing called voluntary periodic review, which is kind of, it puts us on a soft hook where we make some commitments to update our plan policies. But in exchange, the state brings both technical expertise and some dollars to the table to help us with that effort. So it's very much voluntary, very much collaborative. So we put, based on that discussion, and to satisfy the October second deadline, I believe it was, we put together a grant application asking to start periodic review and also asking for some financial assistance to help us with Step One. And Step One really is community engagement. And that, the way that we framed up the community engagement work, we said there's two parts to it, two basic parts to it. One is to develop a best practices policy for how we engage the Benton County community. And then use that best practices policy to actually engage the community and get feedback from every corner of Benton County about what's on people's minds, what are their priorities? What what's keeping them up at night in terms of worries? What is exciting them in terms of aspirations? You know, what's our collective wisdom? Tell us about what's over the horizon? And how do we organize that in a way that that kind of helps us build a comprehensive plan that meets the needs of all of Benton County, captures shared interests, helps us to avoid the worst of, you know, our our fears, and actually, you know, builds a resilient Benton County going forward. So so that's all that we put together. We didn't say what we thought should be on the list, even though I think we all kind of know that housing affordability is way up there. We know that water is a concern going forward. We know that the ag and timber economy and our ag and timber resources are you know, part of that concern. We know that wildfire risk is becoming more of a concern. So we we sort of know, I think intuitively, what is going to be on that list, but this is this is really more about asking the community what's on. what is going to be on that list, but this is, this is really more about asking the community what's on their, what's on their minds. And so the Department of Land Conservation and Development awarded some dollars. We have a $50,000 grant from DLCD to hire outside capacity to help us employ a best practices community engagement strategy and then use that community engagement strategy to inform some general sense of priorities for comprehensive plan updates. So that's, that is where we are in space and time. And I would say the department is excited about the way that we framed this up. They're really excited about your interest and the board's support. And so we're we're just about this close to having a grant agreement put together that enables us to start spending money. So for all intents and purposes, we're basically ready to go right now with the community engagement efforts. We we need to select a contractor, of course. And I, if some of you are willing to help us vet potential firms and help us select a successful one, would welcome that. But that's the first, that's really the first step. And then based on that work, we will as a group, we will put together some recommendations to the Board of Commissioners for what a periodic review work plan should look like. What do we want to work on first? What are our top priorities? What would we do if we could? What do we, you know, what do we want to wait on? But put together a bit of a strategy based on that input, and then we would take that to the Land Conservation and Development Commission for a discussion and approval from LCDC for that work plan. And the reasons for that are, you know, multiple, but mainly it sort of forces us to get serious about the work and get really kind of pragmatically involved in scheduling the project or projects that we want to take on. And presenting that to LCDC helps to get their thoughts and expertise and also build some buy-in from the state of Oregon and from the governor's office. So there's a, there's a little bit of a kind of a two-part benefit there. We, we have to get our act together because that's, you know, part of our, part of our job, makes us take this a little seriously. And in return, we get some partners to come alongside of us and help us get the work across the finish line. Apologies, I'm nursing the last of a cold and so I just apologize. Thankfully, we're not in person. So let's talk just a little bit. Well, actually, I'm gonna pause there just from a process standpoint. Any, you have any questions about next steps? John, please.
Mute. One of the questions I have is when you said that the LCDC, it's, or did I say that right? The LCDC or the DL? Okay, anyway. That the framework that, whatever framework that comes out of the County Planning Commission is guided by the legislative kind of guardrails, I suppose, with regards to how far you can conceptually blue sky, various things. That's, I guess, I just don't know what what might constrain a variety of different newer leading issues or leading ideas, I guess.
Yeah, good, great question. So first of all, the Department of Land Conservation and Development is the state agency. That state agency is overseen by the Land Conservation and Development Commission, LCDC. I know, this is, this is 50 years and we still haven't got it right. So no need to apologize.
Is that because of S 100?
Senate Bill 100, yes.
Yes, Senate Bill.
Still giving back. Yes, it is. So yeah, it's okay if you get those wrong. We all understand. I sometime, I worked there for a while, so I kind of had to, had to learn it. In order for us to embark on a formal work plan under periodic review requires an agreement between Benton County and LCDC. So we have to kind of get into agreement about what the priorities are and also about how far we can reach. So you talked about blue sky, you know, we can tell them we're going to get to the moon on a $50,000 budget and they're going to tell us, no, you're not. And and so that, it's a bit of a, it's a bit of a conversation, but it's really it's not so much a negotiation as it is an honest and robust discussion about the future of Benton County and what it's going to take for us to really secure our vision for our future. And that's a fun, it's actually a fun, thoughtful kind of soul searching exercise that I think is really helpful. I think it's really helpful for us to have to get honest with ourselves about what do we actually need? What what are we facing in terms of challenges and also opportunities? Who do we need for partners? What might any of that cost in terms of dollars or time invested? And so there's an opportunity over the next, I would say at this point, probably about six months for us to reach out to our own communities, hear from them, spend some time chewing on that, formulate a draft kind of proposal, put that forward to LCDC, ask them to think it through with us. And so you're asking a really good question, John, and and that that kind of state-local dialogue is really important to help us get this right and also to tap the experience and expertise of other places. I hope that helps. Other questions? Thoughts, comments at this point?
I I might make, I'll throw something in the in the mix, Darren, that the focus has been on community engagement. Very selfishly and parochially from the planning commission. I I would also like to see us maybe get ahead of where some things are going on in the, in the state around a couple of our priorities. I think we will have interests expressed to the community, but there are probably some things going on in Salem that will have an effect on us and it'd be nice to get out ahead of some of those. And those do fall into the, the housing category. I also think it may fall into the 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 resource lands that that we have, both forest and ag and the intersection with recreation and and growing population in the Willamette Valley. So I think we've got some, a, a couple of things where in addition to community engagement, we we just want to build some momentum on ourselves so we're not pushed back on our heels when the the state begins to mobilize around a couple of these important topics.
Yeah, thank you, Nick. That so that's your going where I was going to go next was to talk about some specifics. And I I totally agree. If we are proactive in taking on some of these things, it will serve our community really well because we'll have a chance to shape the outcomes and and kind of participate in conversation. If on the other hand, we wait, it puts us in reactive mode based on whatever comes out of Salem. And that's, it's really, that's, it's not the best position to be in. And frankly, the state doesn't really like to be in that position. They will because the needs are so great. Think housing affordability, for instance. But their preference is for proactive local governments to step forward and really engage constructively on the front end. So I think we're doing the right thing and I I'm excited about our ability to to shape some of these conversations going forward. Okay, so we've talked a little bit about the framework and the process pieces of this. Now let's talk about kind of what's actually going on on the ground. You all have identified, I think, three major with the Board of Commissioners, the Planning Commission and the Board have identified three major buckets of of issues. In no particular order, those are wildfire risk management, transportation and outdoor recreation. So that's one package of kind of connected issues. The second package of connected issues is water and data-informed public policy. So when we say water, it's really kind of all water. Groundwater, surface water, storm water, drinking water, floods. So water and data. And then there's this third, it's not really a package, it's just this pervasive issue in our community, which is housing. And there's a lot of facets to housing, everything from overnight shelters all the way to executive housing and everything in between. So it's, when we talk about housing, there's a lot of needs and a lot of really important policy topics in in that one word. So Nick, you mentioned a couple of things that are likely to be coming up in this legislative session or around this legislative session. So I'm just going to briefly describe three things and then I've kind of thrown it open because I think you all know as much as I do about any of this. There is a proposal that came out of last session. It it failed by one vote. But my understanding is it will be coming back in this short session to change the way that local governments amend their urban growth boundaries for the purposes of writing certain land uses, housing being one of those. So there's some urban growth boundary, growth management, policy discussions that we expect to be coming forward. And obviously, those would impact a number of Benton County communities, if not all of them. Nick, you also mentioned resource lands and that is a kind of a loaded topic among county planning directors, among county commissioners, among county planning commissioners. When we talk about resource lands, we're really talking about ag lands, agricultural lands and forest lands and then other types of open space or natural resources. For a long time, there's been some kind of growing tensions around how we manage and protect resource lands. And and I'm not going to go down that long list of tensions because there's, there's a lot of, there's conflicts between wineries and wheat fields. There are conflicts between traditional agriculture, agricultural production and agritourism, for instance. There are kind of seems like perennial conflicts between small ag operators and big industrial operators. There are questions around how we provide water to all of those uses, some of which take very little water, some of which are water intensive. So that's kind of the second bucket of issues is resource lands. And then there's this, there's this other bucket of housing and I think you know, the governor has a special task force on housing, production, housing, production advisory council. I think it's 26 members and includes representatives from across the state of Oregon with experience in housing, housing needs. And that group is poised to put forward some recommendations for how to address what really is a statewide housing crisis. And so in that latter kind of bucket, housing, many of those former issues come right back into that conversation. So whether we're talking about accessory dwelling units being allowed or not allowed on rural farm properties or whether we're talking about the availability of water, groundwater to support additional rural housing or whether we're talking about managing urban growth boundaries to contain development inside of urban areas as opposed to outside of urban areas. Many of, when we talk about housing, so many of these issues come right back into play, water, wildfire risk, of natural resource protection and so on. So I know that a number of our local employers, including Oregon State University, Samaritan Health, Hewlett Packard, the Boys and Girls Club, the City of Carvallos, Benton County, have been in discussions about how we continue to provide housing for a workforce that right now is commuting in from Albany, Lebanon, Sweet Home, Salem, Lincoln City, kind of, you know, further and further out. How do we, how do we provide equitable, affordable housing for for a workforce that doesn't force people to have to drive increasing distances? And that, it turns out, we, Carvallos is the least affordable city in the state of Oregon at the moment. Benton County is the second least affordable county in the state behind Multnomah County, which I sometimes have to stop and kind of just let those words sink in because it just seems almost unthinkable. But that's, you know, the data bears that out. So so the question for us possibly in periodic review is is to take on one or more of these things, but to do it in a way that's inclusive and thoughtful so that it ensures we're, we're planning for and investing in the future that we we want and believe in. As opposed to sort of enduring, you know, the pressures of the market or, you know, whatever else is coming at us. Nick, that's a lot. Hopefully I covered what you're hoping to cover. I think I should stop talking and let you all weigh in, so.
Thoughts from the team?
That's a lot. I was just gonna say, I mean, keeping it in those three buckets at least allows me to, you know, to provide some framework to what you've been talking about, Darren, and and much of what you said is they're very informative. And I think that everyone here must bring something to the table with either expertise or experience or something with regards to one of these three buckets. And so, for example, for myself, I'm a, I'm an, I'm an avid outdoorsman. I'm not a hunter, but I I do hike, mountaineer, climb. I utilize all the recreational resources that the county offers and I'm a cyclist as well, bicyclist. And so, you know, when you touched on that one bucket, you know, the first one where we're talking about transportation and recreation, you know, that seemed to be something that if there was a necessity to draw from the commissioners to start talking about one of those three areas, that would be the one area that I think that sticks out for me. But I may be jumping ahead of the discussion at this point in that regard, but I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you.
Evelyn?
Just to remind John that wildfire was also part of that bundle and that's also urgently important to me as in water. I would like to ask Darren to just go over one of the things he talked about so that just to clarify my own mind. I I remember that you got the $50,000 grant from LCDC to, as kind of the first step for outreach. Is that, is that a consultant that is for creating the strategy to do outreach and to help with the outreach or is it just to create the strategy?
Well, ideally, thank you, Evelyn. Ideally, it would be both. Help us develop the strategy and frankly, develop the policy too. So kind of our first step is to develop a policy for community engagement that we can then use to help us with some of these other issues so that we know how to reach people. We know how to get, you know, communication going in both directions.
May I ask a follow-up question?
Yeah.
I remember the wonderful presentation by the Wasco County people. Could you use their presentation to help me understand what you mean by a policy for outreach?
So you probably know from the statewide planning goals that goal, goal one, citizen involvement. I understand that that title is up for change, be more like community involvement for community engagement. In terms of citizen has some negative connotations, some exclusive connotations. But goal one under the statewide planning framework is citizen involvement. And every county, every city is required to have procedures in place for including the public in their decision-making processes. So we don't always take the time to think about it in terms, in those terms, but when whenever you hear an application, make a decision on a land use application, that application has been sent out to surrounding property owners. A notice of the planning commission hearing has been posted in the Gazette Times and also on our pub, public website. The staff report for the hearing is available to the public for review at least seven days in advance of your deliberation. And all of those, all of those kind of required steps are part of our goal one, citizen involvement policy. It's, it's what we're required to do because it's the right thing. What we're proposing to do with this $50,000 grant What we're proposing to do with this $50,000 grant is to really ask ourselves if we were to step that up a notch in Benton County, what, what would it take for us to make sure that all parts of Benton County are included in the conversation about our future? So Evelyn, I know you've been a great advocate for using the local paper, for instance, in South County. Using the United Way or other partners to help get the word out through kind of accepted trusted channels. And this is an opportunity for us to ask those kinds of hard questions for Monroe, Alpine and, and the South County. It's, and to ask the same kinds of questions about Alsea. And that kind of part of the county, the same thing, you know, about Dare Village and Silk Creek. Same, same questions about Carvallis, Philomath, really, you know, reaching out to those parts of the, of the county. And asking how best, you know, how best do you want to see Benton County reach out to you, either with information or with questions to, to listen? And so ideally, that $50,000 would do both things. Help us develop the policy and also use the policy to engage some two-way dialogue with those parts of the community that help shape the rest of our long-range planning effort. So.
There were several times during the past year, year and a half where during one of our, our hearings or work sessions for the planning commission, we discussed having listening sessions or outreach into the various geographies of the of the county. It strikes me that this periodic review coupled with a very small amount of dollars out of the grant could provide the context and the framework to move that idea forward to reality. Because it seems like when that did come up over the, the last year, it, it was hard to figure out what was the organizing theme. Where we would host a meeting and why people would come and how we would kind of focus the conversation. And it, it does seem like this, this might offer that organizing theme. Looks like Shannon, you've got your, your hand up.
Thanks Nick. So I think I just want to also mention kind of in addition to what Darren was talking about, primarily focusing on geography, there are these other added elements that make us that kind of necessitate this more thoughtful approach to public engagement. So beyond just being inclusive of geography, we have to be thinking about being inclusive, kind of in all realms of what that might mean. So I'll give you kind of like the classic example that I think of. So typically with something like a comprehensive plan update or just even planning commission meetings, these happen you know, normally in the Kalapuyia building or some kind of government building. They tend to be at night, kind of during dinner hours. So just you start to see all these factors that line up that make it challenging for certain segments of the population to be able to actually attend and be engaged in that type of project. So that's really, you know, beyond just the geographic potential for exclusion. There's like all these other kind of facets that we have to be thinking about from the beginning to ensure that we are able to include all Benton County residents. Regardless of whatever kind of challenges they might have, accessibility, you know, so hearing, eyesight. If they have young kids that they can't leave at home in order to attend a night meeting. So just all of those types of things is really what necessitates that. Really careful approach to the involvement piece of the discussion. So Evelyn, I hope that helps it. And I'm sure you've kind of thought about that before. It's not news, but you know, that is why it is something that we think about from the beginning and it is worth spending resources on to get it right. Cause you don't want to get halfway through a project like this. And then realize that, you know, large segments of the population were left out and that, that can really create problems on the road. So.
Evelyn.
And you know, so this leads to that whole discussion of the transition that our society is in as far as tools we have to know each other, tools we have to, to actually feel like a community. Like the fact that we have a newspaper now again is really just serendipitous and really quite, quite frail. And the other fact is, you know, a lot of people don't read it. So they get their news from Facebook. It's all, that's going to be a very challenging topic in my opinion and kind of not that so many of us are trying to crack. And I interested in that topic. So when the time comes, I raise my hand on that.
I can't figure out how to raise my hand. Might I?
Raise your hand and we'll, we'll see it.
Usually I can raise my hand on the bottom. Excuse me, and I have a cold too. So excuse me for the coughing. And I, I think it's wise for people who are new to a committee to just be quiet the first few things. This particular topic is sitting so close to home that I feel like I should say something. We've just been going through a process of doing some organizing out here in Alsea and in a town of, you know, a few hundred people, it's impossible to reach everybody. So I can't begin to imagine the minutia that's involved. You know, at a larger scale, but having just been through that process and, and we're in the midst of it still. What we're finding in our community is that what is sometimes considered outreach on the part of the county doesn't actually reach the citizenry or the communities or populations. So I would advise as somebody with a background in communications and someone else here has a background in communications, I think I saw when I looked at folks' names. One needs to use the vehicle that reaches the ear that you need to speak to. And that may not be the, the vehicle that you know about or, or that's easiest for you to use. And I'll just stop right there. Feel free to ask me questions. Yeah, we've, we've found that a multi media approach of using local media outlets as well as staggering meeting times has been essential in getting maximum input from the community.
A quick note, Sarah, we just had recently, probably last month or was it two months ago, we had, we met with County Wasco. Who basically presented their code change approach. And they said they basically had a marketing person and a communications person that basically threw the kitchen sink on the calm side. At it because you're right, you got elderly people that just read the Harrison Street banner. You have an old newspaper, you got Facebook, you got, you got them all, TikTok, you got them all. And so, you know, who's reading what and who's listening to what, right? And so you got to hit them all, but it's definitely. It, it's a challenge to say the least.
One of our older citizens said at a county meeting lately, he said, if you want to get in touch with me, mail me a letter. He said, you know, he was just real clear, you know, these young, younger people, no offense, younger people were saying, well, we posted it here, we posted it there. I don't, I don't have the internet. I don't have Facebook. I don't have a cell phone, you know, just send me a letter. On the other hand, send a letter to a younger person. I don't know, did they read them? I have no idea.
Yeah, they check their mail?
Right.
I, I did have another question. I, I don't know, I should probably let, allow Sarah to answer any other questions people had. My, my note maybe Darren for you is so the timing of the structure, one of the things I think Shannon brought up was, hey, you'd hate to get halfway through your, your code change. And we run out of money and the thing stalls and instead of taking six months or eight months, it's a five-year deal, right? And then you're just, you're in a bigger mess than you were to begin with. So on the timing and the focus of this, Darren, do you think, you know, initially there's, I'll say, strategy sessions and constructing it. And then we kick it off. Are you thinking the code changes? You know, once it gets going is a six-month deal? I, I imagine it all depends on how focused we are, but what's your, I guess, anticipation of that timing?
Yeah, thank you, Ed. We don't want to get down the road and then have to abandon the effort. And I don't believe that we'll have to. So first of all, the code work and the comprehensive planning work are two very distinct tracks that they connect at points, but they really kind of operate on their own timelines. And the code work is, I'm, I'm envisioning it being three phases. One is kind of an audit and update. Sort of a backwards look and catching us up. Phase two then is connected to the comprehensive planning work. So any policy changes get reflected in the, in the code updates. And that'd be sort of phase two is like a series of updates to reflect whatever we do on the comprehensive planning policymaking track. And then the third phase of the code update is really a formatting and legibility piece. Could also be a language translation. I think by the time we get to phase three, we'll know a lot more about what phase three needs to look like, but it's, it's making sure that our code is as legible, accessible and clear as it possibly can be. So, and those are things that we, we may be able to get grants to do. We may ask for Benton County to invest in separately. Or probably it's a combination of both, but that's kind of, that's the code track. In terms of the comprehensive planning, we have, and we have enough, we think in this first round to, to do this community engagement effort, get some help to do the community engagement. From the community engagement effort, then we'll have a much better sense for what the priorities are. And also how, how ambitious we need to be to meet the needs of the community. That's going to set up a conversation with the Department of Land Conservation and possibly with the governor's office or the state legislature. About what our community needs to be kind of a model 21st century community. The good news with that is now that we're in periodic review, we're at the top of the list for grant funding. We, we become kind of priority number one for the department. Now the sky's not the limit, but for the next couple of biennial budget cycles, we're actually in a really privileged position. And we get help from all the other state agencies. So you remember Wasco County talked about the periodic review assistance team? So D E Q O dot, the Division of State Lands, the Business Oregon Department, you know, all the way down that list, the housing folks. They're all kind of part of our technical advisors, which also includes, you know, being able to say, hey, here's a grant program you might want to take advantage of to help with the work. So I know this isn't satisfying to those of you that like to budget everything ahead of time. But it's a series of conversations that leads to investment, that leads to a series of conversations that leads to investment. So we're kind of I guess it's kind of a design build model, if you will, you know, for our future.
Yeah.
But with a lot of helpful partners.
Yeah.
Yeah.
May I ask then Darren, are the, are the six months that you mentioned and the $50,000 intrinsically linked then?
Well, this first phase needs to happen as quickly as it can. And so we haven't selected a consultant yet. And we need, that's kind of the next step and I'm hoping that you all help with that. Once we've selected a consultant, that timeframe will be driven a little bit by their availability capacity. And also just how quickly or not quickly, you know, we can reach out to the different parts of the community. And we're, we're probably going to have to get out on the road. So Nick mentioned a minute ago, you know, the listening sessions of the road show. And I have to apologize for getting a, a little bit ambitious with you all. I was hoping that that could have happened while we were also undertaking Benton County Talks Trash. And the reality of that is it was too much. So, you know, we're kind of back to the, you know, we're kind of back to the starting point, but we're doing it now with help. So I feel much better about saying this spring and maybe into the early summer is going to be a great time to get out on the road, to do some listening, to send some mail, some letters to the folks that want to get letters, to send a Facebook link to the folks who want to get a Facebook link and maybe send some targeted survey connections out to folks who prefer to just, you know, participate electronically and everybody in between. Yeah, I would say it's for what we know right now, I'd say, yeah, roughly six months.
John.
Uh, thanks Nick. I wanted to thank Evelyn for reminding me that yes, in that bucket was our timber and ag resources and that wildfire mitigation is an important aspect of that, absolutely. But I wanted to dovetail on Sarah's observation that, yeah, someone must have a good communications background within this group. I don't, but I did, I do come with the social service, social work and disaster response framework. And one of the things that we would do following a disaster was something that we called a hot wash. I, please don't ask me where that term came from. I don't know, but the follow-up was to determine how well the resources that were expended during the disaster response reached those who absolutely needed it. And in the same way that we're trying to reach everyone in our community as effectively as we can in order to get as much feedback as possible from the community on what the community needs are, what the community wants are. I, I don't know if there were things that were done like that at, at the county level with any other departments, if there was any follow-up on how how the outreach for Benton, Benton County Talks Trash went or for any other previous exercises in outreach or listening sessions, as, as you pointed out, Nick. And I don't know if those are lessons learned from those experiences and how one can expand on them. I, that would, that's just dovetailing on Sarah on how we can maximize our communications outreach, I guess.
Evelyn.
I haven't emphasized this in my introductions to myself, but before I retired, I was a technical writer and I, I emphasized my interest in what's called information design. So it's, what I did was all in a, in, you know, high tech and user, user interface stuff, but so I do have a somewhat of a communications background, at least an aged one. But I'd offer that to the service of this, of this effort.
So Darren and Shannon, if members of the planning commission have an interest in getting involved in this kind of organizational phase and conversations with potential consultants and so forth, what are the next steps? And what would both of you like in terms of planning commission engagement at this early stage?
Nick, thank you for asking the question. With your permission, I would also like to include Petra in this. I, I missed an opportunity to introduce Petra at the start by saying that Petra is a former planning director and then city manager for the city of Coburg. And while Petra was there for about a dozen years, she helped the city of Coburg successfully get through periodic review among a number of other tasks. So Petra, I'm going to call you out just a little bit to, to weigh in here. It's one of the things that makes us really excited about bringing Petra on the team is her experience with periodic review. I think the next steps, Nick, are for the planning commission to, the chair actually to begin to stand up a few subcommittees. And we're not going to be able to do this work alone. In, in fact, it would be irresponsible for us to try to do it alone at the staff level. I think to the extent that you all want to start getting your hands dirty, you know, really getting into this work. There are at least three things right now that planning commissioners could begin to work on. The first being this community engagement, kind of identifying a consultant, developing a scope of work and, and getting out on the ground and doing some listening. It may end up being all of us, but, but at a minimum, we need to have some, a small group of folks kind of help us get that ball rolling. The second is the code audit. So the code audit and updates end of this first phase. I think it'd be really helpful if a few of you are interested and willing to help us with that, it will be helpful for you to start to get familiar with that work and be, you know, at least liaisons, but even better would be free to help shape those code updates. And then thirdly, I don't want to get ahead of the periodic review process. But given the timeframe that the governor's housing production advisory council is operating on, I think it makes sense for us for the planning commission to appoint, uh, a subcommittee that's ready to focus on housing. In part for housing, but really because it can, that, that, that issue connects to so many others, infrastructure, growth management, transportation, we just, it all, economic development workforce, we need it all kind of comes together around this housing conversation. So off the top of my head, that's three immediate opportunities, I think, for, um, you know, subcommittee of planning commissioners or other members of the community too, they, to join us in this effort.
And within community development, are there leads that are aligned with each of those three bullet points?
Yeah. Good, good question. We haven't made assignments yet in part because, um, Petra's still getting her feet under her and onboarding, but, um, I think the three of us, between the three of us, Shannon and Petra and myself, we will appoint a staff member to be the lead, uh, point of contact. For the community, we haven't really, yeah, so I'm not prepared to answer that question immediately. Sorry. For the community engagement piece, I think that might end up being, um, Petra, but I'm, I'm talking out loud now, not making any commitments. For the code amendment, audit and amendment, um, component, that probably it will be Shannon Bush. And for the housing component, that probably ends up being Darren Nichols, but don't hold me to those, uh, to those assignments quite.
Yeah, I, I ask because marshaling of us volunteers is always much more effective if there is a point staff person which, uh, kind of sustains the momentum between the periodic pulses of, of terrorism.
No, you're exactly right. You're asking a fair question and I wasn't quite sure, um, how far to get ahead of you all because I wasn't sure what tonight's conversation might surface in addition to those three. But if those are the three issues, then I would say, yeah, I think that's probably how we, how we'll staff it.
And Shannon, I see that you've got your, your hand raised.
Um, I don't know if this is a good idea, but I'll just, you know, kind of throw it to the group. So one thing that we could do if it's helpful, um, to you all is to just put together a really simple, like, let's say three or three to five questions, Survey Monkey, um, you know, hyperlink that you can click on to respond to those couple of questions, just saying so that you have a means of indicating to us, um, you know, choose from the list below. And it's basically, I think, going to look like those statewide planning goals, um, you know, if, if we, um, if these are included in the VPR sort of work plan, just a means of indicating your interests so that we can kind of see where everybody's interests lie and how we might have to kind of divide up some of those, um, subcommittees. So that's just one way that we could think about doing that. It's very simple for us to do, to put that together. And I would say generally pretty simple for response. And that can kind of just help us communicate back and forth about, um, who might be interested in working on certain topics.
I, I do think that would be helpful. The other thing that, uh, that we did, um, when we asked, uh, Greg and Catherine to be on the ad hoc committee is I had conversations with, uh, most, if not all of the planning commissioners just broadly and, and got a sense of, uh, where they had interest and how they might have of interest to get the broader color commentary. And so I'll do that again. I'll, I'll reach out to, I won't violate any pub, public meeting laws, but I'll reach out one-on-one to each of the, uh, the commissioners and, and get a sense with this conversation as a backdrop, um, whether you have interest and, and where you have interest and the amount of time that you might be able to, uh, to dedicate to the, to the topic, uh, in addition to the planning commission role. Further discussion on this broad topic. It's pretty exciting. The, uh, we're, we're seeing the, the opportunity that Darren described, uh, six months or so ago with, uh, the four letter acronyms actually takes, takes shape and we can see how it, it, um, uh, dovetails nicely into the priorities that we identified. Well, it's now coming up on our second year anniversary of, uh, of identifying those as, as priorities. Very good. Appreciate the, uh, the dialogue on this. Um, and, uh, before Darren loses his voice completely, um, perhaps you, uh, could give us a sense for upcoming attractions, um, in terms of, do we have any applications that, uh, you can foresee in the immediate future, any legislative actions that we'll need to, to take action on, um, what, uh, what official duties might we have in the next month or two?
Yeah, thank you for asking. Um, so let me get out my crystal ball and I'll try to give you a sense for how, um, how clear the crystal ball is on each one of these things. Um, I'm going to start by giving you just a quick kind of recap of 2023 in terms of both building permits and also land use applications. Cause I think it, it tells us a little bit about where we're headed for 2024 on those kind of, uh, bread and butter items. Our building permits, um, total volume was down about, um, 10%. So, um, I wouldn't say that's an indicator of 2024, um, in part because the last couple of years have been record years. So in some ways we're sort of, we've come back down to, you know, a normal level, whatever that means post pandemic. But, um, we are watching that pretty closely in part because, um, other counties have begun to lay off some of their permitting and inspection staff. Deschutes County, I think laid off five or six, and I just learned that Multnomah County laid off 75 inspectors. So, um, you know, when you, when you start to see news like that, uh, across the state, you know, we, we pay attention to things like that. Um, we still have strong demand here in Benton County and we're not, we're not wildly overstaffed. So I'm not, I'm not worried about it from a staffing standpoint. I think, you know, I think we'll stay busy. But we are just kind of starting to keep a finger on the pulse of the develop, the pace of development and the workload volumes that are associated with building permits. In terms of land use permits, which are more kind of directly related to the planning commission, um, I'm going to, I'm going to quote this off the top of my head and I apologize. I don't have these in front of me, but we've been operating between, I think about 80 and just over a hundred land use applications per calendar year for the last, um, five or six years until 2023. And then that number has dropped to 55. And so, um, you know, that's, that's a pretty substantial reduction in land use applications. So if it feels like the planning commission hasn't been as active over the last year or so, it's, it's true. You haven't. And neither have our staff really. We've been plenty busy, but we have not been spending as much time on land use applications. So, you know, what does that look like in 2024? I, I don't know. But, um, it kind of feels like our current planning, our, our application driven work has slowed a bit and may continue to be slow for the coming year.
I have a question.
Yeah. Yes.
Have you considered that that's tied directly into the housing market itself with the interest rates? I'm, interest rates have come down, applications in my world have picked up. So if we come back to kind of a, uh, an interest rate that the average person feels comfortable with, do you think that that may indicate a speedier season? Cause that's what we're seeing in my world. So didn't know if there's correlation.
Yeah, thank you, Liz. Um, I, I think there probably is a correlation, but I don't know how much of a correlation. So when interest rates first began to climb, we were expecting to see a direct and immediate slowdown and that did not happen. In fact, um, we had kind of a plateaued a little bit and then we had a bump up in permits. So, um, you know, that kind of defied logic a little bit for us. Also, um, what we know is that Benton County is roughly 5,000 housing units behind, um, demand. So there is a need for 5,000 more units than we have available currently. And that, when we look ahead over the next 15 to 25 years, that number just continues to grow. Um, so I, I, interest rates definitely impact people's ability to afford a house. There's no doubt about that. But I don't believe it's a direct one-to-one correlation, at least not in what we've seen. And I welcome anybody else to weigh in here.
Um, what about, um, building costs, right? If we're talking about applications, we're talking about construction that also went up and the shortage of just labor. So the, the timeframe it took you to get something done on your house was pretty long as well. And if, I'm not sure what costs for products and goods are going to be doing over the next year. Um, I think we have some Suez Canal issues now, um, for containers, uh, coming up, but, um, I think I, I would guess that all of that played significantly in the slowing in 2023, but maybe it'll come back a little bit.
Yeah, I, I don't know what to expect. I, I, I don't think it's going to slow down much. And, but, but one of the questions is just, you know, do we have a, a place to build housing? Um, do we have the infrastructure to support it? In other words, do we have roads and pipes and schools and whatnot? Uh, and then of course the cost of constructing a home in, in anywhere these days is pretty expensive. And the cost of financing has been expensive. It's now moderated a little bit. So what does that mean? I, I don't, I don't know. This is where my crystal ball kind of becomes a little bit murky. Yeah. Okay. So that's, um, just an, just a general kind of framework. This is, you know, this is what we've, we just looked at our 2023 numbers and that's what we're seeing. In terms of applications, however, um, Republic Services has been consistently kind of focused on coming back to Benton County with a, another landfill expansion application. And that timeframe has, has moved a little bit. Um, I probably should say that, you know, if, if you've been around for a while, you know that, um, it's been a little over two years since they withdrew their appeal of the last planning commission decision. And so we've had a, a pretty extended timeframe to think about some things, including Benton County Talks Trash. But my understanding is that, um, we are likely to see a landfill expansion, conditional use permit application in early 2024. So I don't, you know, that's not my crystal ball. That's the private landowner at the Coffin View landfill. That's, it's up to them to decide when that um, application gets filed, but they've been pretty consistent in communicating that to us. So, um, that obviously will be, um, a very important conversation. It'll be, it'll be complex. It'll be much more complex than most of the work that the planning commission does. Uh, and it will also be timely. It will put some, um, you know, we'll have a, it'll have some deadlines associated with it, within which we will need to act. The, the one piece of good news that's associated with that is that, um, we've identified both, um, outside land use firm and outside third party council to help the planning commission and the board of commissioners work through that, um, application review, staff report and, um, public hearings process. So we'll, we'll actually be able to bump up our capacity substantially during that application. So want to flag that for you without knowing when it's coming, um, want to flag that for you. And then also, um, let you know that, um, whenever the landfill operator decides that it's ready to file an application, first step will be for them to participate in what we call a pre-application conference. And that will be a public, be a publicly observable presentation. So following on some of the good recommendations coming out of the Benton County Talks Trash Work Group, we will make sure that the application materials and the application of the presentation of those materials is available for observation by the public. So you'll have a little bit of a, an advanced heads up before the act, application actually arrives. And then once it arrives, you'll have some good help from outside of our staff. So that, um, you know, that obviously would be a large and important thing for the planning commission to work on and to get right. And I know that you all are up to that task. And you'll have good help to, to support and guide you along the way. If in the meantime, there are things that you want to make sure that, um, are on the table for discussion, either during a pre-application conference or during the hearing itself. Please don't hesitate to reach out. Um, I know a couple of folks have reached out to me already with some good suggestions and some reminders about some of the really top tier issues. Um, I'll make sure that the earlier planning commission hearing and kind of the draft findings that you prepared a couple of years ago, as well as the discussions before, during and after Benton County Talks Trash are forwarded on to the consulting firms so that they're fully briefed. And, um, and ready to, to review any subsequent application, um, kind of, and fully vet it for the issues and the, the things that matter the most to our community.
So, so in that vein, um, Darren of, of ensuring that we do things, uh, right and properly and, and so forth. As we know, this application will have a lot of, uh, of scrutiny, public involvement and, and complexity. Um, we already have two members that are participating in the follow-on activity from the Talks Trash activity on the ad hoc committee. And I think it was clear when we made the assignments that such participation would not in any way affect their ability to continue doing their roles as a planning commissioner. Uh, second, kind of in that same vein would be participation in, by a planning commissioner in the, kind of the pre-session of the application. We would want to ensure that that doesn't in any way compromise the planning commissioner's ability to fully and actively participate. And, and then finally the outside, uh, consultant that will be support to the planning commission. Uh, our engagement and involvement in the selection and the priming and the coordination and so forth. Want to ensure again that that doesn't have, uh, any, uh, implications for a planning commissioner to do their role in the public hearings process and ultimate deliberations. Do we need formal, um, uh, council consideration, recommendation, review of those three things before we move into the process, get, get ahead of it?
Uh, great questions, Nick. Thank you, um, for asking them. Uh, let me make sure I heard the questions correctly first. The first question, I think the way I heard it was, um, is there any, is there any worry about the two members of the planning commission who've been appointed to the Sustainable Materials Management Planning Committee, um, somehow kind of violating the, the, the two purposes of those bodies, you know, tainting themselves with one with the other. I believe the answer to that is no. And we've been very careful to make sure that the long range sustainable materials management planning process is able to move forward on its own, is it as an important standalone project beyond and outside the scope of, um, any kind of management or decision-making that needs to happen at the Coffin View landfill. Having said that, I think if, um, Catherine Bisco or Greg Hayman or any of you feel like those, that separation begins to get too close for your comfort, or if I feel like, um, those two projects are getting too close to each other, please speak up and we'll make sure that we, we keep those separated or give you, um, an opportunity to kind of recuse yourself from one so that you can fully participate in the other. The second question was, was, um, you might have to help me out here. The second question I think dealt with.
Kind of the, the pre, pre-application or the early application, uh, kind of discussion, free form discussion. Kind of discussion, free form discussion that takes place with the, with the applicant and, and so forth. Generally, the planning commission has not participated in those. That's been between the applicant and, and county staff. In, in this case, I, I would imagine that some planning commissioners may, may want to participate. Assuming that it doesn't take their role downstream.
Yeah, thank you. So that is a good question for council. Um, ordinarily. We, this would be a staff exercise. We would sit down with the applicant, whoever that individual or firm might be. We hear from them, their proposal, and we'd provide kind of early advice, guidance, cautions about. Uh, what they're proposing um, to help them strengthen their application. And usually that does, it ha- it happens all the time. It's just a, it's a regular best practice at most. Community development departments, including ours. Um, and it, it happens at the staff level. In this particular instance, because of the profile and because of the recommendations coming out of Benton County Talks Trash, the community was really. Um, asking for, and I think wisely asking for a much higher level of transparency. In advance of any future land use applications at Coffin Butte landfill. So what we've agreed to do is to make. Make that dialogue, that conference publicly observable. It, it will not be um, a public participation kind of format. It will not be a town hall, but. Anyone who would like to observe will be able to kind of see the presentation from the landowners, landfill operators. And hear the Q and A that happens between um, the Benton County Departments, but also any state agencies that choose to participate. And possibly um, federal agencies if they choose to participate. So get to hear the question and answer back and forth. And, and the responses that come from. The applicants. That will be a publicly available forum, and I, I believe that a planning commissioner could observe that. In an objective and dispassionate way without. Tainting or coloring your ability to make an objective decision on a subsequent application. I'll double check that with counsel to make sure that we don't run afoul of some, some rules, but I, I believe that any of you would be. Able to observe that, to listen, to consider. And then also come back to a subsequent application and make an objective unbiased decision. But if, if you feel like. That's troubling for you, uh, please let me know, or just excuse yourself from the pre, pre-application conference. You don't need to watch that. And wait for the application, but let's, I think, just reach out to me um, or to Nick and. And we'll make sure that we get you, your questions answered in advance.
I think in, 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 in general, any, any public meeting participation. It would be far fetched to see how that would taint. Uh, a planning commissioner in their role in the, in the hearing and deliberation. With one slight caveat, and that is if you are a speaking active participant in one of those meetings. If, if your comments uh, are construed to be biased in one way. Uh, you know, at the beginning of every public hearing, we, we ask, are there conflicts, ex parte contacts or a bias in this matter? And so if in participation in any of these meetings, your comments are construed as bias. And you don't have a bias, uh, it, it would be wise to be um, judicious in those comments. Andrew.
I think the one thing that would come out if, if any one person was observing that who's a planning commissioner, there would be an ex parte. And you would have to go through the long dialogue of what you observed during that, including possibly any different changes that happened during the, between. That meeting and what was the final application before the planning commission. So I, I, I was, you know. Uh, front say now, I don't plan to be out there just because that to me, to me, it would open too many floodgates and ex parte. It, it would just get messy. So I, I, I personally would recommend not attending, but I, I'll just say I will not be.
Thank you, Andrew, uh, for being clear, and I just want to say. What you're suggesting is by far the cleanest way to avoid any perceptions of bias. But I also want to underscore what Nick was saying a minute ago. I think, you know, if you're, if you are an observer and not a commenter. That is something that you can explain. You can explain what you observed and you can explain its impact on your ability as a decision maker. To remain unbiased and objective. But these are questions, um, I'll, I'll run these past our county council. And um, they're good questions also for the outside council who's coming in. I know that um. The outside council that we've retained has deep expertise in Oregon land use, and it will be a good resource. Uh, for those questions as well. So Nick, uh, any other questions on or comments on that pre-application conference?
I don't believe so. Not from my, my standpoint. Anyone else have any uh, questions on that?
All right. So Nick, you'd ask us a third question, which was, I think the way I understood it was, um, would the selection? You know, could the vetting and selection of a consulting firm or the, the development of a. Scope of work for voluntary periodic review in some way taint or color. The ability of a planning commissioner to make a decision on a conditional use permit application. Um, I think the answer to that is no as well, but I would just encourage all of us to keep. Our eyes open and to be circumspect as we move down these multiple paths so that um. If at any point in time, somebody does not feel comfortable or they see a, you know, a potential conflict. Please just let either Nick or me know about that, that the. Open communication, I think, is gonna be our best friend here, um, so that we protect your ability to participate fully and robustly. In the decision making process on a future land use application, and also maintain your ability to be thoughtful. Leaders um, guiding us into the future.
Well, thanks for the update, Darren. Any other comments or observations about the potential of a republic, public services application coming in the. Early part of two thousand twenty four?
Are you asking staff or are you asking commissioners?
Any of the above.
Okay. I don't have anything else to, I don't have anything more detailed to share. I do expect. That we'll see that, you know, it could happen at any point in time, but I would say I've also felt that way. Kind of for the last couple of years, it could happen at any time, and it hasn't happened. Doesn't mean it's not going to happen. It just means that um. We have, we've really, I think, benefited from the last couple of years and. A lot of community members have rolled up their sleeves and gotten deep into the weeds on solid waste and disposal issues, and it, it's been helpful. And so as that Benton County Talks Trash process has wound up, I've noticed that um. Republic Services has reminded us a couple of times that they have not, they have not um, you know, changed their intentions. To file an application. So that's where we are.
A question if I could, if I could, um, on the format of that, that uh, that meeting, would it be like remote? Would it be a Zoom thing? I, I just can't imagine uh, some of those folks showing up and not. Really engaging when they're supposed to kind of watch and make sure it's a fair process on, on, on the community side. Does that make sense?
Um, I think so, Ed. I think, are you asking about um, whether the.
Meeting structure, kind of like, is it gonna be in person where they're gonna sit on their hands? Or is it gonna be behind glass doors, or is it gonna be like a Zoom meeting where you just mute everybody and, and they just get to watch the back and forth? It's kind of a tactical question, but I, I'm curious about how it'd work.
Well, it's a good question. Um, you know, the last time we. Processed a landfill land use application, it was during COVID and. Our only, our only option at that point in time was to have a, a remote video only. Uh, meeting, and I, you know, I think the chair at the time did a really good job. The members of the public who testified for the most part. Also did a really good job of um, participating passionately but respectfully.
Okay.
I, we haven't really talked about what the forum should be, um, you know. That, those kinds of questions kind of go both ways. Uh, when people are in person, I feel like our humanity helps us to be better.
Oh, yeah.
It depends. Sometimes, sometimes people are more, somehow feel more free to. You know, engage. Um, when they're online or when they're behind a, a, you know, a pseudonym. So it's. We haven't made that decision yet, but I think the, the pre-application conference process will probably give us some insights into. Um, the level of emotion, which is totally understandable. People care about these issues. People are passionate and that's, you know, that's a good thing. Our community welcomes that kind of uh, passion. And as long as we can do it safely and, and constructively that. So.
All right, thank you.
So for the last hour, um, we've um, uh, gone through a number of the priorities for two thousand twenty four. Did any of the commissioners have any thoughts during that time of, of things that we did not have a chance to, uh, to touch on? Or discuss? Yeah, Liz.
I just have a question for clarification. So when we were previously talking about uh, the three items that. We could all volunteer and help out with, but did we end up deciding that you would call everybody individually? And then we would let you know what we were interested in, and then the committees would be formed from that? Is that how that's gonna work?
Well, I, I will certainly uh, call each of you and have a conversation about these three topics and. Engage your ability and interest to participate in any or all of those, uh, those three. We, we also discussed having uh, some sort of a survey monkey do the, a similar thing. Of, of just uh, you know, answer with some interest. The two can run in parallel, but I'll, I certainly will uh, call each of you and have a conversation. So we are at the, oh, Evelyn, please.
So we did a lot of things that, that were multiples of three tonight, and I would like to get clarified. In my own mind about the policy topics that we, that were raised tonight and reiterated from our long past discussions. Number one being um, wildfire, transportation and recreation, number two being water. And data informed public policy, and number three being housing. Can you remind me then how those three policy topics will fold into the next? For our next steps, are those? Just historic priorities and that we, we want to keep in mind and, or, or are they going to somehow? Guide the public outreach and public engagement um, process? Or, you know. Multiples of three that we talk about tonight, and where do they fit together?
Well, that's a, it's a good question, Evelyn. Um, so without knowing exactly which pairs of three you're talking about. But specifically talking about the policy issues, I mentioned those mostly as a reminder to kind of remind us that. We are not operating in a vacuum. The planning commission and the Board of Commissioners have consistently taken what was, I think, a list of like thirty items. And we've worked to bring that down to some top tier priorities that we all agreed on. And so that's the three. Those three bundles that we talked about at the start. So I just offer that to say, we, we have those and we have not forgotten.
Okay.
That those issues are, you know, are still very much, I think, at the top of our minds. However. When we go out and talk to the communities, I think there's an important opportunity to listen first. And whether we kind of share with them um, in a conversational manner, I guess it would look something like this. Hey, um, here's some things that have been top of our mind for a while. Do any of these resonate with you and what, and what else would you add to the list? And so. This is where having some specialized community engagement expertise will help us know. How best do we approach Alsea, Adair Village? Alpine, um, you know, the other parts of our community. In an op- with an openness to listen, but not completely in a vacuum. I mean, you know, we've. Our planning commission and board have been thinking about these things. We don't want to be, you know, just kind of naive. But we also don't want to sh- kind of show up and dominate the conversation. If that makes sense.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. So, and I'm suggesting.
The uh, the two hour point and um. Are there any final thoughts or topics? I'll quickly scan my screen here for any hands raised. I don't see anything, so without objection, I believe we are adjourned. And uh, stay warm. Hopefully, there won't be too many power outages tonight.
Yeah.
Thanks everyone for your participation.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Yeah, thank you.
Good night, all.